Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 26, 2025. This is the meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at the Gloucester High School. The public is welcome to attend our meetings if personally or alternatively through the Zoom link provided on the agenda. The meeting notice will reflect that we will be a Zoom only. As the recent-
This meeting is being recorded.
As the recent amendments to the open meeting law allow, the school committee- Hold on, sorry. Sorry, continue speaking. Full meeting remotely. Please note that in person meetings will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt their notice. That was on mute. That's me.
Thank you. I must have took everything. Drop it all set. Yeah, it was you.
I don't know what happened to this. It was all set up at seven. I don't need one.
You know, we've got a Zoom and shameless setting, so you're automatically going to audio. There's no-
Yeah.
We got all set up for problem.
Sorry about that. Okay, so I'll call this meeting to order and state that permission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, like long learners, and ask that you join me in the seat. We will do introductions as to who is around the table, but let's start with Laura Wiesen, who is joining us remotely tonight.
Laura Wiesen, school committee member.
Stephanie Delisi, recorded secretary.
Great, very good.
Keith Minio, school committee.
Phil Melvin, school committee.
Kathy Glancy, school committee.
Frank, school committee.
Gary Hand, school committee.
Pat Lummis, superintendent.
Amy Pascual, assistant superintendent.
Gary Fresh, CFO.
The first line of the business is world communications. If anybody would like to speak, now is your opportunity. I will read the guidelines. Public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard in the world communications. World communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school community business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public can address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communications to the recording secretary. So if anybody is online, raise your hand. Do have people in attendance. Anybody's? We can talk this evening.
You look, hand raised.
Rachel, let's start online. Rachel Rex has her hand up.
Good evening, folks. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Good evening. Tonight, I stand before you not just as a union leader, but as the voice of the educators who are leaving this district in alarming numbers. They're not leaving because they don't love their students or their profession. They're leaving because they do not feel respected, valued, supported, or safe in their classroom, schools, and this district as a whole. This exodus follows a recent strike, a clear indication of the profound dissatisfaction and distress. When our educators speak up about untenable conditions, lack of resources, and the emotional and physical toll of their work, they are too often met with dismissal instead of action. When their expertise is ignored and their calls for support go unanswered, they make the heartbreaking choice to walk away, not just from the District of Gloucester, but sometimes from the profession entirely. The recent strike was a manifestation of these deep-seated issues. Post-strike, instead of witnessing improvements, we've observed a continued departure of our educators. High turnover rates destabilize our schools, disrupt student learning, and erode the trust within our community. This trend is alarming and underscores the urgent need for this systemic change. We need a commitment from leadership, from this committee, from educators, from all of us to ensure that every educator feels valued, heard, and safe. As we approach Superintendent Lummis's evaluation, it is imperative to reflect on the current state of Gloucester Public School District. We must ask ourselves, are we fostering an environment where educators feel respected, valued, supported, and safe? Addressing this crisis requires more than acknowledgement. It demands actionable steps. We need to engage in open dialogues with our educators, understand their concerns, and collaboratively develop solutions. By doing so, we can rebuild a culture of respect and support, ensuring that our educators can thrive and in turn provide the very best education for the students of Gloucester. Thank you.
Is there anybody in attendance that wants to speak? You know, in the hands of some life.
My name is Sean Lilly, and I reside at Fort Kitefield Road in Rockport. I'm an educator here at the High School and the Life Skills Program, and I have the privilege of being a member of the Union of Gloucester Educators. A number of years ago, there was a remake released of The Man in the Iron Mask, The Old Three Musketeers. In one scene, the tyrannical King Louis is raging to D'Artagnan, now the captain of the Musketeers, that D'Artagnan's old comrade, retired musketeer Athos, is involved in a plot against him. D'Artagnan tells the king of Athos's noble character and then says, "If he has become our enemy, we should ask ourselves why." The educators in this district, virtually without exception, are skilled, dedicated, professional, and people of high integrity. If we weren't, it'd be crazy to let us sit with a million miles of the children of this community. The superintendent's administration and the school committee have managed to alienate just about all. If people like the educators of Gloucester Public Schools have become alienated from you, you, as the superintendent's administration and the schools committee, should ask yourselves why. When skilled, dedicated, professional people of high integrity feel condescended to it best and ignored at worst, they treat us like the help, is the way more than one educator has put it to me. The superintendent's administration, the school committee, should ask themselves why. When skilled, dedicated, professional people of high integrity feel unsafe and overwhelmed at school because we don't have the people to help our highest needs kids when they come to work with knots in their stomach and go home with tears in their eyes, the superintendent's administration, the school committee, should ask themselves why. When skilled, dedicated, professional people of high integrity still don't make enough to cover their basic needs, even after 511 days of the contract and two weeks of picketing, the superintendent's administration and the school committee should ask themselves why. When skilled, dedicated, professional people of high integrity are forced to make the wrenching decision to withhold their labor purely as, and I will keep saying this until finally it registers with somebody, a manner of conscience as a last resort to advocate for themselves and their students, the superintendent's administration, the school committee, should ask themselves why. And when, even after the return to work, skilled, dedicated, professional people of high integrity are still leaving in their groves, everyone's around the company, new educators, the 20-plus-year veterans of the district, because there's only so many times you can hit your head against a wall, the superintendent's administration and the school committee should ask themselves why. And all this asking themselves why should be integral to evaluating the performance of the superintendent's administration and the school committee, or that evaluation is not honest and cannot be taken seriously. All the conditions and the events I just described happen and are happening on the watch of this superintendent's administration and this school committee. They didn't just happen by themselves, and they happened to skilled, dedicated, professional people of integrity. Would you have us, the people of this community, believe none of it has anything to do with the performance policies and attitudes of the superintendent's administration and the school committee? That the actions of the superintendent's administration and the school committee in no way contributed to the dire situation the educators and students of this district faced before and after November 2024? If you really believe that, you should ask yourselves why. Guarantee the educators have.
Really, this all starts with just a question.
Oh, maybe no dresses.
Oh, Rich Francis, 123 Water Street, Beverly Hills. Educator here at Gloucester High School. And so I have a question, and I'm hoping that maybe later on I can find out the answer. Does the district, or is there a plan to do a staffing analysis of Gloucester Public Schools? Do we know through quantitative and qualitative data how to determine personnel needs across its departments? If I'm informed correctly, the city council abrogated their responsibility last night in order not to do an audit of the district. Without a structured, data-driven approach, how can our schools make objective decisions regarding staffing increases, reductions, or efficiency improvements? Or as in a more jargony way, to leverage staff and strategy? To better understand where additional staffing is needed or where we can move staff to achieve better efficiencies, I'm requesting documentation from Gloucester Public Schools outlining a staffing analysis process. A staffing analysis would help determine the appropriate full-time FTE staffing required to deliver services effectively. This should be completed in every school department, not just teachers and parents. It should be informational technology, administration, food service, transportation facilities, and other support staff. Some examples that we could get from a staffing analysis. Special education personnel. We know that individual education plans, IEPs, are legal contracts that outline the specialized services students with disabilities require. A true analysis should be conducted to determine how many hours of service, e.g., physical therapy, occupational therapy, counseling, specialized reading, behavioral support, speech therapy, are mandated across the district. The total number of required service hours plus time for preparation and IEP meetings should inform FTE staffing levels. Intervention supports, reading and math. Data from assessments such as DIBELS and STAR 360 should inform staffing decisions for Tier Two intervention programs. If students need intervention, the district should calculate how many FTE interventionists are required to meet student needs. Do we have enough? Are we staffing these positions already? Are people in these positions leaving for greener pastures? At the high school, do we have enough staff to offer enough options for students who are pursuing a variety of career and college options? Do we have enough staff to produce civic-minded graduates? At the elementary level, do we set classized guidelines based on research-based, research-backed recommendations for optimal student learning? Multi-language students, do we have enough staff based on the score and projected numbers on ML students? This can be a tricky one. We don't really know how many kids we're going to have every time. Okay? And lastly, the district needs to confront the reality that people are leaving. We heard this.
Rich, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have a written statement you want?
Do what?
Do you have any written statement?
Yeah, I marked it up a little bit, so I can email it. Currently involved, Gloucester High School, Engineering and Physics. As most of you know me, I've been here for a very, very long time, and you know that all the good effort that I put into my teaching and the kids that I actually produce are top-notch. No one has ever said that I suck at my job. But now we have a problem. We have a problem right now because we have a PR problem. Nobody wants to go into teaching anymore. This is the reason why, because the way teachers are treated, they're not treated as professionals, we're treated as servants. No one has asked us to come to actually come to our classrooms and have a conversation. I would love to have that. That way you would actually know what the heck's going on in the building, instead of relying on certain individuals to tell you what's going on in the building. My own four kids, my ex-wife and I told our kids, "Don't go into teaching." Why would you want to take crap money, and why would you want to be treated that way? Teachers and people are not going into teaching anymore because it's just not a profession that you want to get into anymore. My father was 10th Group Special Forces. That's a Green Beret for you people that don't know. He taught me as to be an officer in the military. And he says, "You know your job. Your problem is you need to go in and take care of your people. You take care of your people and their families, and they take care of the mission." We have gotten away from that kind of leadership. When I first came here, the people cared about what we did. The superintendent would have us over individually and have conversations with us. We don't have that anymore. A lot more things, but I think that that says it all. What you need to do is actually get better PR. How do you do that? Well, I'll tell you right now, the teachers that are leaving are saying, "Don't go to Gloucester." Why would you want to go there? So what teachers are coming over here? You're going to get the lowest of the low. You're going to get people who can't get jobs anywhere else, and that doesn't help the rest of us who are stuck here. Now granted, most of us are actually looking for other jobs, because if we can make $14,000 in the next town over, we're going to go. And that is another problem you have. Because I've been here for 20 something years. And if a school hires me, I'm gone. And I've proven my existence here. I've proven that we've done a great job. So have many of us. But you treat us like we're like the newest teachers that we don't know what the hell we're talking about. You try to tell us how to teach. It is ridiculous. I would love for you to come to my classroom. Come at one person every day. I don't care. I have an open door policy. When you come into my classroom, you will see education. Three minutes is up. That's all I need.
Incurred. I've been in your classroom. I have seen-
No one's going to end this year.
I will speak. My name's Eric. We'd like to finish some of the comments that my brother here, Rich, was unable to finish. So I'm a high school biology teacher, and there are a couple of things that are really important. I'm hoping that exit interviews are being given and fully the information to those people that are coming from those people that are leaving. I've heard a lot of things that are said, that people are retiring. From what I know, from the majority of the people who have left, they're not retiring. They're going to other districts, other leaf-in-education in general. So with from those exit interviews, to come to qualitative analysis that would help this particular body understand what's necessary to retain good teachers. When I listened to Mr. Jarvis, I also, I just want to step back also on what Kurt was saying. When he used the words PR, he didn't mean hiring a PR firm. That's something that we should look at, what the cost of that was. And realistically, if we're just spinning things is one thing. If we're just presenting one-sided views towards things, they're not necessarily reflecting from what the people are saying as to why they're leaving. That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for that we can work as educators with the district so that we can attract, retain people here. That's most important. I also heard what I was trying to say about Mr. Jarvis when he was here. He used words that were business jargon. He used words like leverage. He used words like capitalize. He used words like going to look at the different job areas that are there, which is perfectly fine to look at that. But the solution is not to decide, "This is the pot of money that we have here, and this is what we're going to do with the people that we have and increase the work for them" without giving them the resources that are necessary and the support, especially for our special educated, our special educated teachers. And I'm afraid from a distance, that's what it looks like. This is what the mayor says the budget is. This is what you're going to get, and you have to figure out how you're going to do it. We need a comprehensive view like what we're talking about as far as staffing that's necessary to provide these services. Otherwise, we will continue to be out of compliance, and what will that cost at the very end? So as we go forward, please listen to your educators, and please listen, and please evaluate those people who are leaving and the reasons why they're leaving, and work together to try to help it so that people will stay here.
Christine Travers. I reside at 25 Uncas Road, Gloucester. I'm a proud member of the Union of Gloucester Educators. This is personal for me tonight. And I'm going to try to maintain some composure. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the students, the reason we're all here, students of Gloucester, who have lost exceptional, dedicated, and invaluable educators. I have worked with each of these educators that I'm about to speak about, four people. I feel these losses personally. I feel these losses professionally. In the last month, we have seen the resignation of Sean Lilly, a dedicated special education teacher who's worked tirelessly for our needy students. I work with those same students. I know how hard that job is. Shelley Laza, a passionate educator who supports at-risk youth. She has built phenomenal relationships with the staff and with the students. Allison Murphy, a speech pathologist who helps children find their voice. Lisa Lovella. A school adjustment counselor at West Parish, who has built strong, lasting connections with students and families. People don't walk away with this much experience for no reason. These losses are not just names on the list, but I wanted you to hear their names. I want the public to hear their names. They represent years of dedication, relationships, and expertise that have shaped the lives of countless students. And the hardest truth is that these losses were preventable. They were preventable. When we lose educators of this caliber, we don't just lose employees, we lose mentors, we lose advocates and lifelines, lifelines, literal lifelines for students who rely on them every single day. There are stories that they could tell you that you might not believe because you aren't there every day. And I understand that you're not there every day. These positions are not easily filled, and the impact of their absence will be felt deeply for a long time to come. So I ask, what's being done? What's being done to stop this from continuing? What steps are being taken to retain the educators who still remain? Because this is not just about those who have left. It's about those who are still here, wondering what's next, who's next, those who may think of coming here. The time is, our action is now. Gloucester students deserve stability. They deserve educators who feel valued and supported, and they deserve a school system that fights to keep its best people. Thank you.
I don't have anything prepared, so I just got to talk off the cuff. Melissa Desmond, by Baker Street, Gloucester. To piggyback on what Lisa was saying, I've sat through two presentations now by Dr. Menjarvis on his improvement plan of how things are going to change in special education in the district. And I want to tell you, after today's meeting with him, we sat during lunch, gave up our lunch to have a meeting with him, the special educators at West Parish. It sent panic through the room, because we're already understaffed, we're already overloaded, we're already not getting prep times, we're not taking our lunches, we don't have time for our testing. And this is not just West Parish, this is across the district. And now he's saying, "Well, we're going to do a co-teach model." And in theory, that sounds great, but what happens, and I'm going to advocate for my students and the students in the programs, what happens to those kids who are the most struggling learners in our district? It's almost like we're saying, "Okay, we're going to give up on them." And I know that's not what, not what we're thinking, but looking on paper, his plan looks wonderful. It looks beautiful, just like Penn Tucket has. It looks great. But in reality, it can't be done with the current staff we have. It can't be done with the students we have in front of us right now. I'm not saying that we're against it. I will do whatever I can to improve the lives of these special education students and the Gen S students so that they can get the services they need. But it's not a come in and overhaul everything, and that's what we're all feeling, that everything's being overhauled. And it should really be taking in baby steps, and I think I mentioned that when I met with Mr. Lummis this week. And it really scares us as educators, and the fact that we've lost so many people already. People are turning away from special education. People aren't going into education to begin with. And it's just really scaring me as a parent, as a teacher, and as a community member, because our schools should be a top priority. And it just doesn't seem like the people who are making the decisions are actually coming in to see the classrooms. And I know that any one of us, we welcome any of you at any time, come in and observe a day in our classrooms to see what it's like. But I just ask that before you set any grandiose ideas into play, you take time to talk to teachers, take time to look at what's happening in the schools. That's all I, let's see how many people we have lost.
Mary Ann Elbert Puchet, online.
Thank you, Mary Ann Elbert Puchet, 93 Mount Hudson Avenue. This is really hard to listen to every single school committee meeting. I remember when you all sat in the building committee, getting ready to build a new consolidated school. And you spoke of how every teacher, 100% of the teachers, were in favor of building a new school because it was going to bring such positivity and it was going to help our students. Well, you built West Parish, and now you've built East Veterans. And what I'm seeing personally is the dismantling of our schools, of our teachers and staff, and it's trickling down to our children, our students. We had six retirees that gave 142 years combined of dedication to the schools who went to special education. 142 years. That averages out to 23.4 years per employee. And I feel, and a lot of people feel that they were very disrespected. Okay, they signed the agreement. But it shows such disrespect. I'm asking you to please sit at the round table instead of being on either side of the table and work with these people, as Rachel said, and the other people following her. You are losing some very, very valuable instructors. You're losing Amy Pascarello. You know. I know you know. You've sat with so many of these people. You're proud to be the principal of the East Gloucester Elementary School, very proud of it. And I'm sitting there and I'm seeing faces. There's not a smile on any of you. Some of you even have your cameras shut off, which is really disappointing. We need to bring back the community to act as one instead of separated. And it's so separated, and it's so disappointing. It's disappointing for all of you. It's disappointing for the teachers that are standing there speaking to you. It's disappointing. The morale in the schools, I hear it every day. While I'm not on the school committee and I'm not on the city council, you know I'm a big advocate. And I come to all these meetings, and a lot of people get in touch with me. And I'm, I'm asking you, Superintendent Lummis, please, 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 do something. You're at the helm of all of this, and I'm asking you to please find a way with your leadership to bring this community back together. This is not, I'm not here to argue or complain. I'm pleading with you to find a way to bring this community back together for the, for the best interest of the students, the teachers, and staff of this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are they done on that?
Yes.
Dan Graham, One Big Food Way. I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I think, I feel like I think you guys feel. Kind of on loop right now. And like, we need to accept, we've had some real tough conversations with each other that got really ugly. Mr. Mary, you and I've had this conversation, and you and I've had this conversation, right? We have had some serious conflict. I'm tired. I've had kids go out this week in ambulances. We've had more fistfights than we've had in years. I have kids hospitalized. I'm exhausted. My Tier Three programs right now don't have teachers in them, and I'm being asked as the counselor to come in and like fill the gap. Our kids are struggling. I know it feels like every session, we're coming in and yelling at you. It is coming from a place of passion. And I would ask that, how can we bridge this gap? We have to do this. We have to stop sitting and crossing each other. We have to stop yelling at them, friends. I know you're passionate. We have to stop yelling at them, because you can't hear when people are yelling at you. And you have to start respecting that. Appreciate, it's, we get these great letters on Teacher Appreciation Day. If you had five minutes of my day, you would be buying me flowers right now. I have no idea what I'm doing. We have to figure out a way. We have to do this. We can't go on like this. Our kids are suffering. Our community is suffering. And every time I come to these meetings, I feel this wedge between us. I'm tired, and I want to cross that gap. I just would close by saying, I want to end on a positive, because we're all doom and gloom right now. Amy Pascarello, I have appreciated so much the team meetings you've had with us. I appreciated the moment during the strike where you and I sat at each other, and you said, "Help me understand." And you listened, and we argued, and actually we got in a little fight for this, right? And then we hurt each other, and we got what we needed to do. That's, I think, that's the model. We need to start our conversation with, let's be civil again. And we have ownership of that, you guys. Sorry. Don't want to piss any of my friends off. We're coming in hot-headed, and we're getting more hot headaches. We don't feel hurt. And guess what's happening? The more you yell, you lose your voice. We also have to, we want them to change. Sorry. I feel like you need to come and work with us, and I don't feel that. And we need to stop this engagement, because it's not working. We need to be open to them coming to us as well, and we need to continue to yell at- If we need to continue to yell at them, what's the motivation to come talk? What's the motivation to go to a classroom, right? And it needs to happen. Because, sorry, I was shocked during our negotiations about how much you don't know about what happened in the school, genuinely. I don't mean that as an insult. There were statements made where I was like, don't we know what we do? Do you know what our life is like? So, I can't speak for everybody. Come in, come talk to me, come do a tour with me. See what's going on. I won't yell at you, I'll answer your questions, ask them. And when I say this is what I'm struggling with, before having a response, right? Listen, just hear it. Hear where we're coming from. Listen to it and then step back from what you're hearing and say, okay, let me process this, let me think about it and let me come back with some questions. Let's start dialoguing. Because if we keep doing what we're doing now, we're not living up to our kids and what they deserve and what Gloucester deserves. We have to bridge the gap. We have to. And we have to too, right? And you have to too. We need to start letting go of some of this toxicity, it's not helpful. Amy, I genuinely appreciate the opportunities to start the conversation, but you and I can't do this.
Dan, that's great.
We will move on to recognitions. Does anybody have anything positive and celebratory to say? We know, I mean, I know the play was a couple weeks ago.
I do, yeah, I checked my calendar and make sure I didn't already comment on this. I went to 101 Dalmatians over at West Parish, it was a terrific show and well done by the students and the staff that was involved in that and really appreciated the opportunity to attend. And the invitation.
And I'll recognize the basketball team, which we can't hear, somebody posted the article. All sorts of scoring was going on and we got the glimpse of what's going on, so good luck to them. Mayor?
And I don't know if the Battle of the Bands was before or after our last meeting, but I went to that. Really cool to see the, you know, it's, these kids who are young high school kids playing Paul and Oak songs. It was kind of an eclectic mix from hard rock, hard thrash metal to Paul and Oaks, it was really good. The days I was on the stage there, but it was fun. There's an article on paper today about it, about the winners, so we'll check it out.
Kathy?
Oh, sorry Laura. I did see you.
That's okay. I just want to do a pre-recognition for descendants. The O'Malley Middle School Play begins Friday night, two weekends, six shows, I believe. So it's a pre-recognition for all the hard work that's gone in from students and staff and parents and everyone else. So a pre-recognition for that show.
Great. It's well attended, as always.
We have two advisory council here, but Amy Pascarello has been given from their advisors some updates from the students and she's going to play.
I don't remember what it was like to be in high school or it was decades ago, but it'll be my bad thinking. So from the photography, congratulations to Charlie O'Meara, Obie Warren, Lexi Thomas, Abe Cooper, Lauren Sargent, Colin McQueen, and Vincent Schrimmataro, all who have worked, have worked on display for the annual Through the Student Lens exhibition. On view beginning March 2nd at Marblehead Arts Association, located at 8 Cooper Street in Marblehead. Artist reception is from 2 to 4 on Sunday. The exhibition will be up throughout the month of March. And if you have the opportunity to get over there, it is an incredible show. If you have any of these students, if you see any of these students, please congratulate them. From the exchange program, next Wednesday, the AEP Day for nine GHS seniors participating in the American Exchange Projects, Domestics Exchange Program during homeroom, we will have all, we'll have a small celebration for students. We'll receive their letters. I'm reading it as the students, so when I say we, I'm speaking as the high school students. I'm from student council. We finished Secret Pal Week for our staff. Teachers received random acts of kindness or small little gifts. It was great for staff to meet new students. Secret Spirit Week, last week staff did a Secret Spirit Week. Tuesday was Anything But a Mug and College Sweatshirt Day. Wednesday was Slumber versus Lumber. People had to guess if they were dressed as a slumber or lumberjack. Thursday was Retro Day, Friday International Day, which also coincided with World Language Week. And the World Language Department planned a week of competitions, posters to be viewed and to view Life is Beautiful and the performance by an Irish group. The school was decorated all week too. From NHS, invitations have gone out to students, induction is on March 20th at 6:00 PM. Hold the date if you can make it. The Class of 2028 is holding a jalapeno's night this Monday from 5 to 9. The Drama, Saturday, March 8th, the GHS Theater Program will again host the METG Massachusetts Theater Celebration Drama Festival. Four schools from around Massachusetts will join Gloucester to each present their one-act plays for the audience. After each performance, the students will be given feedback and time to workshop moments from the show with judges working professionally as performers in Massachusetts. Tickets are $5 at the door, cash only, for the whole day of shows. Or tickets can be purchased online before the festival day by using the card visiting metg.org. At 9 o'clock, it will be Malden Catholic. At 10:40, Ole Weston High School. At 1 o'clock, our Fisherman Gloucester will be there. At 2:20, South Shore Charter Public School. And at 3:40, Rotten Dunsteville High School. And then a late addition, so the report is the GHS DECA will be attending the 66th Annual State Career Development Conference at the Boston Convention Center, Exhibition Center in the Seaport District. The DECA students have been preparing for a highly competitive conference this year. They'll be competing with 3,614 Massachusetts DECA students from around the state. And the following students competing. In the Financial Operations and Research, we have Sarah Finn Costa, Jefferson D. Carmo and Henry Harrison. For Financial Operations Research, we have Isla Black. Financial Consulting with Cake and Savings Day, Fiona Black. Franchise Business Plan, Cameron Nunez and Hannah Sherlock. Innovation Plan for After School, Miles Tran Harrison. Hospitality and Tourism Operation, Kiara O'Brien, Julian Nixon and Viella Rin. For International Business Plan, Martina Cracchiola, Sofia Pravello. Marketing Communication Series, Alexis Thomas. Sports and Entertainment Operation Research, Alina Brown. And finally, Business Solution Projects at Adeline O'Meara, Janelle Frank Leoni and EDD. You did well, there you go.
Three minutes is up.
By three minutes, there you go. Thank you for your positive report. Want to say?
You have to say.
You let the high schoolers go. Okay, so the next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone have any items, say goodbye three minutes.
The second agenda.
Moving to the second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I hope we have to do roll call because Laura's online.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Mr. McKee?
Yes.
Ms. Prince? Mr. Malvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minia?
Yes.
Chair Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Weeser?
Yes.
Okay, deliberations on education.
Thank you, expecting, so I will hit our updates. Okay, so as we say, everything matters in the Gloucester homeschools and everybody, everybody belongs, yep. So tonight gives an update from around our schools. Stephanie, can you just on the stripe?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to use that, thank you very much. And monthly staffing update and then the inauguration of the Shemana Vines School Group will follow those two. So our kindergarten registration is up and running. Our first kindergarten, incoming kindergarten parent family night last night at West Parish. Tonight's at Beeman. And then next week will be East Veterans on Cove. Really good attendance at West Parish last night. And handing out packets and leading pack packets and so we're off and running for next year's incoming kindergartners. I don't know what year that will be, but it's like, I guess it's 13 years from now. 288, same. It sounds like it's going to go up to 50 or whatever. So that's up and rolling and going already. So a few updates around school, so at O'Malley, Max Cornell, Sherri came and shared a presentation on Japanese American incarceration during World War II. So tied into the middle school curriculum. His team developed a day planned for students to gain an understanding of this era, news history and learn Japanese culture. Versus sort of a learning day.
I don't need to interrupt, but we can't see that, so we're trying to, we're trying to get a real study.
No, I've got.
And that's what the feedback you're hearing. If we could just. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And Stephanie, your eighth grade ELA class has partnered with Lanes Coven through support from Gloucester Education Foundation, bringing professional actors to conduct workshops and bringing the ELA curriculum to the shape spirit into life. So we appreciate Stephanie's leadership on that and also appreciate Gloucester Education Foundation's support and then the part of Lanes Coven on that. So really, again, two examples of really bringing learning to life, O'Malley. At West Parish, so this was the 100th School Day of the year, yesterday, I believe.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, yeah. And at West Parish, they're continuing with grade four wit and wisdom training. That's been rescheduled to February tomorrow. Final Friday recently, originally happening in the libraries on Mondays, Tuesdays. And then of course celebrating these 100 year old, a school day by dressing myself as a 100-year-old. That looks up. Updates at Beeman, so backyard growers continues to be in our school, obviously. And Beeman's having their favorite taste test in their cafeteria, just had it recently, sorry. And serving sweet potatoes and chocolate mousse. Last week, being kicked off their reading festival and school-wide assembly. They're having I Love to Read, sort of a contest. They brought in Chris Johnson, who is the author of I Love to Read. And that picks off their two-week read-a-thon where they're going to be competing for most minutes read outside of school by each class. The result will be a pizza party for the pass that reads the most. And then also they're just finishing up their winter meetings for ELA. This is data meetings with teachers and coaches working together. Supporting, identifying what students need additional support interventions as they aim to continue their growth towards their spring benchmark goal. So it's a great combination of different things going on at Beeman. And then on Cove. So instead of movies or entertainment or videos, Hunko has had recently a games day, our games, you know, school-wide game time, basically. And the nice thing about that is folks are off screens, but they're practicing, learning things like taking turns, winning and losing appropriately, which is always a good lesson for all sorts of humans. Supporting another team building, just really connecting in those ways, just really beneficial on many, many levels, great to do. They also finish their winter benchmark and their data meetings, well-led by the math literacy coaches and again, stuff like Beeman and other schools, identifying what intervention groups need to be created to help the students to support. That's a great combination we have across our elementary school. East Veterans, they also celebrated the 100th day of school. They have photo booths apparently, which is great. They also finished up their data meetings as well. And then also just recently, you know, we have so many partnerships put together by our staff, our teachers, administrators. And East Veterans is getting another one up and off the ground, this is with the bookstore of Gloucester. Part of East Veterans add books to schools' libraries, so it's just another example of how we have community connections in all our schools. To strengthen our schools, strengthen our support of students, really appreciate East Veterans getting that up and off the ground. Gloucester High School, Gil Natter is here tonight, which is great to see. But also want to acknowledge some accolades they've gotten recently. So the Gil Natter earned an Audience Engagement Badge for the Best of School Newspapers Online for meeting certain thresholds. And Gil Natter is actually the only master's school newspaper with that badge at this point. So it's about using social media to engage audience and then also using those analytics to measure and understand their readership. Great. Ruby McLean, who was published in the Best of School Newspapers Online for her report on multilingual learners and support. And then Santana Fariah was also published in Best of School Newspapers Online for her article on the kind of negotiations. And the online version's report, you can link to those articles. Great, excellent work, as always. I do often think that Gil Natter is a more worthy publication than many, many out there. Not most out there, so I really appreciate the two of you and all the work right by the staff there. Of course. So also we're, you know, our Family Community Speaker Series, the third year of it to help families and parents and children, students, a variety of areas of support. Our speaker later in March, sorry, the Hannah Joseph, who's a speaker who is a former athlete, former Division One basketball player. And he's brought to us from teacher Rory Gentile, we saw him speak. He's a teacher at Endicott and really persistent in getting Mr. Joseph to come here. Also supported by the Gloucester Professional Players Association, Gloucester Health Department as well, for our schools, some grant dollars. Mr. Joseph is going to speak about how through his work as an athlete and through trials and tribulations in his life, he learned to develop emotional intelligence, resilience, self-awareness. And that has really been a basis for him successfully navigating emotional challenges. So geared towards all, you know, all ages and athletes, non-athletes, all students, all families. But just another example of really trying to share positive messages about what it means to grow up in today's day and age and what that means for families and students in terms of really building a successful life, that way. So appreciate Mr. Gentile's leadership on that. Sal's here, here's Gus, just a legend and a really important part of our student community for many years. He's recently graduated from Life Skills as he turned 22 and had a wonderful celebration here. I wasn't able to go unfortunately, but I've heard lots about it. It was a real tremendous moment in the lecture hall there, followed by a party. But just current students and staff, but also former students and staff spoke to Sal and how inspirational he's been, his perseverance, his just great nature. And it was, for my understanding, just a really meaningful moment for Sal, both friends who were attending. So just appreciate Sal again and recognize his achievements. Battle of the Bands event, as Mayor Verga mentioned earlier, here's a couple pictures of two of the winners. Somebody had this right, it was on February 7th, and American Single, one from the judge's choice and Demonic Chero, people's choice. You always wanted folks to come up with band names, two brilliant ones.
Flip through a dictionary and pick words at random.
That's one way.
I can tell you from experience, it's the thing that breaks bands up.
And then a couple other things, just, so medical system, we're continuing to move forward and put steps in place. The launch of the system is fall. Here we have examples, so one of these happening right now is our voc tech carpentry and electrical students are the ones who are repairing and rebuilding and rehabbing the room that will be the medical system room. repairing and rebuilding and rehabbing um the room that will be um the medical assisting room. The number of it right now, but fourteen something. Possibly. Um I think former culinary um room, which has been sort of stored for IT and other things, let them up late. Um but they're doing, you can see there, Adam Ramonic and Evan Porter, thankfully showing uh with proper personal protective equipment, and they do some work there on their new carpentry and also electrical that's working as well. So really appreciate uh carbon instructor Steve Abel and Bob Devlin Electrical um for their work with students, leading them to do some really great work to support the school community. They'll also move people, the building inspector, you know, permits, that sort of stuff, and making sure that they're doing it all to code and whatnot. So I do want to say a couple of things. Um uh as we're launching and move toward launching medical assisting, uh obviously the reason for it is uh to to expand um the pathways our kids have towards creating, you know, their lives and being prepared for stuff outside of beyond graduating. Um and the more we can offer that variety and expand it, um especially in uh leading to, you know, careers is really important. Um uh we've uh selected uh medical assisting um a couple of years ago. After, you know, with the hopes of broaden broadening the attraction and the students who are, you know, getting into uh VOTech. Um but also because of the the demand um for me um for health uh care physicians. And also the fact that medical assisting is one that uh can lead to a lot of pathways for students. So a lot of different roles, great training in 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 a broad area. Laid into me- medicine and health, but also what they call health assisting, which really just leads you towards a path towards nursing. Very, you know, foreign uh profession, obviously, but medical assisting gives our students more options to pursue in greater fields, whether that's continuing education or work. So um all the work we're doing now um uh to lead up to um launching it is all grant-based. Uh Gloucester education is helping us, other grants as well. Um it's not coming out of the operating budget anyway at this point, not taking it any way, shape or form away from the other programs. Uh CNT, one uh impacts adding to, um and one way it's adding is obviously giving them a a project close to home like rehab. So I really appreciate um uh that. The other thing about medical assisting is by adding a fifth program um to our VOTech, it allows us to, we we're then required to create exploratory program. So by doing that, it also helps the benefits of whole school as well as all the other, the four other programs. Because all ninth graders have exposure to um all the programs, all five programs, um and we're hoping that will if kids engage in things they maybe hadn't hadn't thought about, being engaged or aware of. But also potentially strengthen, expand our all of the programs for them. So there's a lot of benefits coming from um the work that we're doing to expand that facility. And then the last piece here, another uh update from uh high school. So as folks know, we've got a K-band savings bank that had a branch in the Gloucester High for a long time, thirty-four years, it turns out. Um lots and lots of students have benefited from um both the branch literacy education we do here. But also, you know, role setting for years. Um just recently, K-band savings bank has uh helped me understand that um many students have gone on to working at the bank. Currently, seven stu- former students who work in the K-band saving branch in the high school are are working for uh the bank, including Mitty McCastro, who's been there for thirty-two years at the bank. So if you do math, that means you were one of the first people to do the uh banking. Then went into the workforce with them and this probably has been there ever since. So we appreciate that. I'm sharing this because there's another shift in this partnership. Um as most folks understand, um not too much um uh going into a bank these days and working, you know, with a teller. Um so there's work we've been doing in that uh recently in the savings bank because of the changing nature of banking, it really needs to add a date. And been thinking for a while about how to update it. And uh Gloucester High leadership, our counselors, and also um K-band savings leadership have come up with a a good transition, a good next step. And now they will be closing down the the branch here. There's much use for it at this point, but it'll be opening up internships for our students to um to be to be working at the bank. And by doing that, have a much more sort of modern and um and sort of future-oriented approach. Come into much more contact with um a a much wider variety of roles than we could here in the branch, and also understand um, you know, a much wider variety of the work that bank students do. So that's not only the teller role, deposits, lending, um understanding financial products, uh customer service, the financial topics. So um the K the internship start starting two interns per semester as they get it going. K-band savings banks being very thoughtful about um about uh how to approach it, make sure they build it, build it in a way to make it sustain it, and also really support students. Then as they get that, repeat on that, then they're committed to expanding to more and more students. So again, like our VOTech work, like our robotics work, like our science work, like all of our work here, really another example of setting kids up for success in whatever steps they take after they graduate Gloucester High. So again, it's the end of an era, definitely. Um but really do um appreciate the bank's interest and willingness to continue to play a role. Gloucester High, we really think this is a good next step to give valuable experience and um education. I think that's all before I go into staff. You have any questions, bud? Um as you know, uh last month, we started.
I mean, just a quick question about the uh medical assisting um area. Is that is that gonna be a treatment area in any respects, or do we know that yet?
Uh just explain to me what you mean by treatment, so.
Well, uh assistant, right, the medical assistants, um I assume would take um, you know, demonstration of certain practices. So I wondered what would be happening in that moment. There going to be any kind of actual, you know, practice?
Yeah, they'll be taking like vitals and sort of stuff, I believe. I don't know exactly the curriculum, I just can't.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I know it's still in flux.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 but other folks know it more than I do right now, okay? Um but no, they will be taking vitals and things like that. I would consider that treatment, yes. Um I don't know the specifics yet. Oh no, public isn't coming to a treatment? No, no, not at all. No, 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 no public treatment at all.
Sure, sure. So so fellow alum, I'm not a lot, sorry, fellow students.
Yeah, fellow students. So other students are in the program. So, you know, we're both in the program, one's being the patient at that point, that sort of thing. Um so but I don't know to what level it is.
Yeah.
You know, surgery.
I know a lot, lots being developed, you know.
Um but there will be, no, um but and also treatment um in terms of um working on um I don't call them dummies. They probably call like.
Training.
Training.
You can call them dummies.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, um. Like mannequin type thing, yeah. But but these are ones that are like built for these purposes.
Yes.
So they have pulps and that sort of stuff. They have respirations and sort of things. So um yeah, that's how they.
Okay.
So there's simulations as well as.
It's a simulation lab.
Okay, that's.
I don't think dummies or mannequins is.
Simulation lab.
And one person who's.
But but some of the mannequins or whatever might have a pulse, that they would take the pulse, that respiration, they can count that. Um it's it's a training facility.
Yeah.
They, as we saw at the uh Marshall Community College, they are, I wouldn't say realistic, but they 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 feel kind of reliable. Even comparing one of their older models to one of the newer models.
It's gonna be robotics and.
And they'll be controlling worlds.
Let's go to staffing update. Um again, um you know, uh we are having challenges with staffing right now. Um they are more, it's more challenging than since I've been here, since I've been here. Um you know, there are um local issues and concerns certainly, and also macro ones as well. Um so let me just give some updates here. So the ones you see highlighted are new openings, basically. Um the ones you see uh um uh that are not in gold print are, you know, still open from when I gave the report a month ago. There are other ones that don't have on here that we, you know, uh fill, that sort of thing. I think maybe perhaps next month, um we will film, we'll also put the ones that are being filled on as well. Okay? So again, you know, just what continues, um one of the pieces here is special education-related positions are becoming more and more um we're uh staff are leaving, but also they're very different to staff. That really is um sort of a system-wide, statewide, probably beyond the scenario, you know, real challenges um in terms of just, you know, the supply of teachers. That's probably not going away in any time soon. Um and particularly in the most difficult position or and what I mean by that is um sort of a highest need students, but that also includes multiple different students as well. So uh departures since the beginning of the year, so total, this is teachers, eleven teachers and ten professionals um from uh uh the beginning of the year. That's an increase of four teachers, uh four teaching positions. That would include like a adjustment counselor this past month, okay? Um the reason for departure, so are, there there are many, they're buried. Um we learn them in a variety of ways. Um but there are retirements, there's folks moving moving away to different places, there's folks moving to higher positions in the district or a different district. Uh folks who, you know, maybe this was too challenging or seeking a less complex position. There's um higher salaries in other districts, folks needing the education field. We are, we are doing X interviews, we've fallen behind on them, we'll continue to do them, I will report um sort of in a way uh more specific, so we obviously go forward based on those X X interviews. Um and uh yeah, so we'll be looking at, you know, reasons and rationales, certainly things you can learn um about the local situation is here, certainly by by listening to folks and need to do that. Um but again, we are, we are trying to keep up with those, trying to um after the X interviews, we fell behind, but we'll all, obviously. And as I said last week, last month, sorry, uh departures in hard-to-fill positions, specifications, and multiple educators are really, really difficult to fill. That's not only, that's not just a Gloucester situation. We fill it every single day here. It's a big impact, um but you will see for these other educators, you know, every district you look, you're um there's a real challenge um in the The other area I think that is of the highest concern their year or year, which is a program, staff retention at such a fundamental level. Okay, um um we are uh expect to happen as we sort of really continue to work very hard on where we are at specification, and that means our inclusion programs, our services, related services also program. We strengthen them in the years to come, that as those position becomes clearer and expectation in programs, the programs definition become clearer, that clarity helps attract people and retain people. Um but that's really the difficult work that's gonna take, you know. Uh that does not give us answers right now. Just looking at the long-term view. So here are, here are um the specifics again. So you'll see the changes where either in January or February here, the additions since last time. And these are the year, these are essentially when folks um departed, um they may have given notice earlier type of thing. Um so there may be something on here um that don't um because they've given notice, but they haven't haven't departed yet. Typically, you know, when I give a notice and actually departures, okay? Which you can see, um education program teachers uh this past month, and East Veterans in O'Malley. Um Learning Center is also a special education uh position, the ESP as well there. Um so again, that's that is hitting us right where um we have the most need. And these are difficult positions and they're difficult to fill. Just I won't, I won't, do need to go on this, just again, the context um uh related to other um across the state. Uh historically, our retention has been slightly better than the state. And then this is uh again, uh last year's data on our dark districts or newer districts again, sort of uh middle of the road here, uh I guess middle, higher higher than middle road, we're closer to the top here than we are on the bottom. Um so sort of right smack in the middle, again, just trying to give some broader context for folks, in case folks haven't seen this. The other thing, and this is, you know, an area where um we have to do more work. I mean, I hear the GDA leadership speaking about this, and I think it's a really, really powerful place for us to to partner and collaborate on, and then surely need to, because um we have got to get better at not only posting positions, but also pursuing. It's gonna get harder and harder. We're participating in job fairs um we've never had before, not recently, I should say. Um uh we're proving the sort of sort of pine between uh folks announcing their departure and posting. Um but what we really have to get much, much better at is, you know, pursuing folks. Um developing partnerships, um uh perhaps some friendships, the Desi is starting some uh apprenticeship program, and probably get involved in with local colleges. From the challenges there, that other folks are trying to do. But we have to get much more aggressive than we have been ever. Um it's a real change in the dynamic. Have to also better understand why folks are here. But that's in the context, and that's in the context of a larger systemic change, that's all. Or is it? I I really, really deeply believe there are tremendous reasons supporting Gloucester. You know, we have dynamic um schools and people, I think commitment from our staff is I is I'd say, I'd match with anybody, anywhere. And more importantly, I think one of one of our draws is um there's a really strong commitment and care for for the homeless community um and for families and students that um I just haven't sensed of this, I think. That is, that sort of togetherness around that, that commitment, that sort of care um is really one of our major draws. We also have a good draw when folks, you know, we are people, every process, that's, you know, being staff and educators. Um they are really drawn in by them. It's a huge credit. So how do we get, how can we get more of that? Get people to know us sooner, faster than we are. My, I, I, I all I do appreciate really hearing, know, talking to folks in our schools and being in our schools, like this is hard stuff, that folks are, at least I've heard this saying again, even know more challenging job than you already have a bigger chief public school teacher, okay? Especially schools with diverse, you know, needs and wide range needs. And at the same time, you need to keep on being better able to talk about the strengths and what comes with that challenge, uh and together is a point, and pulling together our work, meaningful work. It's very powerful, and to keep on to do and do a better job. When I say we, I mean, this is, this is takes all of us. This is not something that that student can do uh on his body, so. That's something a school community can do, it's not even your role. But um we have to do a much better job of that, have to be much more aggressive. So weren't easy answers. It's not easy, it's not an easy um challenge. I feel we need to do more of it, so. Anybody?
I'm gonna be the first to ask a question. I'm gonna be the first to ask a question on that, on this topic. Has the Department of Education talked at all about, you know, public service announcement, you know, a few years ago, when we were breaking? And I brought on student attendance. They had it on the radio, they had it on TV. Somebody with a statewide presence needs to promote the teaching profession. Because, yes, it's challenging, but like a lot of jobs that are challenging, we do things because there's equal, if not greater, reward. And somebody needs to be talking about the positive rewards, because I think so many jobs are challenging. So many roles in the world that people do, that we get exposed to, they'll say, oh my gosh, thank you that job, because I couldn't do that job, but they've made such an impact on me. I think of nurses, I think of so many people in the healthcare field. And so somebody, I don't think the MTA is gonna take charge of this, because it doesn't seem to be on their list of things to do, but somebody like the Department of Ed, if they have, I mean, secondary and just higher ed, you know, at state level, it'd be great to promote ways to get you.
So I don't know, I mean, Desi is really aware of the issue, the challenge, okay? Uh I I don't know about public service announcement campaign with them, I don't know if they're you know, the right ones, are you positioned to do that? Certainly, I would say, I mean, I should not tell the governor what to do here, okay? But I mean, the governor has that sort of, you know, uh voice and and and, you know, fully open, and then, you know. And that's sort of thing that the governor's office could need with support of of the organization, right? And that's just, you know, sort of, um I will say that the school um student association doesn't have that sort of leverage, doesn't have that that capacity to revendre, or, you know, doesn't have that sort of that that, how to say it, some, that you know, just static, like like this this power, right? You know, just static, like, like this, this power, right? I do think the MTA is, I mean, it's actually a good idea in terms of, you know, powerful, and then really getting around so many, so many poor things, and then. And I don't know what they're doing on that, but they, they certainly could, that's just. Suppose that, okay? But, but I do think that. Despite the challenging work in both schools is, it's vital, vital work, and yeah. There's to be some more of that, again, folks. Focus on here, you know, and the way we can. But it needs some bigger juice as well. We shall be very concerned about. Yeah, yeah, I guess, right, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a.
Give me an idea. Okay. Okay, next item of business is the superintendent's evaluation, we are locally late. On the evaluation that we are delivering this evening, and this for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, and it's a little. Using when you're working on it, because there's recent information, but you're trying to think back to. Last year, which was year two of our ongoing plan for improvement. So. There's probably a little bit of a mix in terms of comments, but. So just want to make sure people realize that this is. A little bit late, because there's obviously been a lot of things occupying many of our time between negotiations. And a lot of us spend a lot of time doing, and there's been a lot of difficult work going on as well. Okay. So. I will preface this by saying this is, superintendent seems to be the only position that are. Evaluated in public, and I think somebody should change that, not that the evaluation can't be a public document, but that the process should. Not be as awkward for people who do some amazing work this way. Okay, so on professional practice goals. We set goals prior to the two thousand three, two thousand four, twenty-four school year. And professional practice goals. The ratings are, did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met or exceeded. There, there are seven of us, and two rated significant progress, four rated met, one rated exceeded. Student learning goals. Four rated some progress, one significant progress, one met, and one exceeded. District improvement goals, four significant progress, that, and one exceeded. We also assess the superintendent on standards similar to the educator evaluations as well. In terms of instructional leadership, there's one. Rating for needs improvement, five for proficient, and one for exemplary, and I will say that we put the same standard as. Desi has trained us to do, which is proficient is a very high bar. It's not an B, it's an A, and exemplary probably an A plus, plus, so. So efficient means that there's consistent, really great work going on. Management and operations, one needs improvement, one proficient, or four proficient, one exemplary. Family and community engagement, three proficient and four exemplary. Professional culture, two needs improvement, one, three proficient, and two exemplary. Overall, summative performance evaluations, there's one with need improvement, five proficient, and one exemplary. I will, so my job as chair was to kind of summarize, synthesize the evaluations and with an overall evaluation. Yeah, I'm going to read this into the record. The overall evaluation by the school committee is that superintendent Lummis has a clear and concise vision in leading Gloucester Public Schools. And is committed to improving, improving student learning through impactful curriculum advancements. Stronger student supports and shared responsibility across the district for student outcomes and belonging. Superintendent Lummis provided a thoughtful reflection on his goals, which highlighted progress. Some notable items are establishment and effective. Results of school-based attendance teams, which showed improved student attendance, strengthening the CBTE program. Increased family engagement, development of a special education handbook, those are just some of. The items, areas needing increased focus identified by superintendent Lummis include a more focused approach to inclusive practice in professional education students. And multilingual learners. And implementation of the special education medal. Particular strengths highlighted in evaluations include strong instructional leadership. Progress towards a district-wide culture of reflective practice. Leading by example, strengthening teams with a clear focus on collaboration and building positive culture. A strong focus on strengthening special education, indicating this tireless work to ensure all students feel valued and have the opportunity. Also highlighted superintendent Lummis is being, Lummis being a great communicator with various stakeholders, his strong leadership team who share the district's vision. And significant improvement in family engagement through many forms of communication and efforts, including culturally responsive communication. Superintendent Lummis's budget and overall operational management is also a key strength, which is important in such a large, complex organization. He does have the biggest management job aside from there, in town, and in any town, quite honestly. Also noticed, noted with superintendent Lummis's exemplary character and deep commitment to Gloucester students. The key area of focus of an improvement is student learning across a district, of which there are many initiatives to help every Gloucester student learn at higher levels, such as implementing and evaluating. And refining, and refining curriculum investments and fostering collective practice. The committee was very candid about highlighting student growth percentages and the benchmarks. And student needs as we receive regular. Benchmark data and we monitor it. And so we are definitely very transparent of what the issues are within our district and the work that is happening to make progress on those. This includes continued focus on more effective special education programs and practice, along with all the other initiatives that are in the outline for. Improvement. Finally, there is unanimous feelings that Ben Lummis is an intelligent, knowledgeable, dedicated, and remarkable superintendent, and members. Continue to be grateful to have him as the leader for Gloucester Public Schools. And we have. We have. We're going to go, I'm not going to go through all those ratings. I'm going to go to the standards of instructional leadership. And then again, the overall ratings for instructional leadership, where it needs improvement, two proficiency, four. And exemplary one, and Bill's going to. Change up the local sound by covering this.
So you want me to read this part here?
Yes.
Read it into the record, comments and analysis. A big, a big item worth noting, noting is the overarching student learning goals, we continue to look for improvement in this area. Through implementation of newer curriculum and strategies. We hope to see steady growth in this area. We believe the tools and metrics are in place, but we need to see an upward trajectory in our students' test scores. These are, these are comments by various school committee members, so I should use the word I. Invariably, there is, this is another comment, last school committee member, invariably, there is still plenty of work to be done. Our benchmarks for SGP for the district at large are still out of reach. Yet Mr. Lummis is in the process of developing, or has already initiated several useful tools. To analyze and identify the issues at play. Also, curriculum has been, curriculum has been revamped with the intention of a district-wide uniform overhaul. District now has valuable tools to determine the effects. Of our efforts to make possible appropriate adjustments to strategy as needed. The third comment was. With regards to the superintendent, you have demonstrated a clear and effective vision for structural improvement. Aligning district goals with measurable student achievement outcomes. Under your leadership, the district effectively uses data to guide instructional priorities. During resources are allocated based on student performance and areas of need. You have built and maintained strong collaborative relationships with all stakeholders. Fostering a commitment to continuous learning and achievement for all students. Instructional leadership is one of two areas where I am most impressed with your efforts. You have developed and managed high-functioning teams who are committed to the variety of challenges, the challenges of our students.
Other management and operations, again, the overall ratings were. One comment, for strong management, cooperative style, and loyalty to proven systems, Mr. Lummis says that exceeded leadership characteristics towards ethical, but fiscally sound and appropriate management. Another comment, district operations are extremely well. Leadership, his ability to manage a complex organization with hundreds of staff, systems, and programs is remarkable. Budget development is exactly, budget consistently reflects the district's vision, mission, and goals, even in times. With less than adequate financial resources. Superintendent Lummis handling reductions in staff in a professional and thoughtful manner, leading into this year.
Next one is family and community engagement, the overall scores were. Three for proficient and four for exemplary, and the comments were as follows. Communication remains superintendent Lummis's greatest strength. He's engaging, likable, and a good listener. I appreciate the effort he puts forth as it pertains to commu- communication. Another comment, the superintendent continues to make strides in engaging the public and providing safe schools for our children and school staff. Third comment would be during two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, our district made significant progress in engaging families and stakeholders. The communications director at the, at the direction of Ben. Provided regular communication to families about activities in our schools. It is most unfortunate that position could not be retained for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. The district also serves our families well through culturally proficient communication. The final comment would be, your outstanding communication skills are commendable, it's clear you prioritize transparency. And welcome open dialogue to address community concerns, specifically when you address the challenges of physically twenty-two-five budget. I appreciate the way you communicate with staff, you are clear and strive to foster a positive collaborative working environment. Even when the messaging is difficult news. The outreach and assistance to our non-English speaking families over the past year is impressive. And the last one would be for professional culture. Overall rating of one needs improvement, four proficient, and two exemplary. And the comments are as follows by the school committee. Ben Lummis is an effective leader who leads by example. He has led with compassion and clarity, working to best ensure the ongoing improvement and healing of our district. He continues to build a strong leadership team and to engage stakeholders at many levels. I believe that has created an exemplary professional culture among our administrators. High marks here as well for his understanding that a shared vision is maybe the single most important trait that a district may have. We must continue to build on the need and desire to have all stakeholders. Built into the vision that we should uphold for our students and staff. Second comment would be. I wanted to add that I thought superintendent Lummis was honest, forthright, and succinct. And has a task reflection of the year-end review, the year in review. It's not easy to take a look and recognize areas that need continued improvement. Commend him for his ability to look through the lens on us. Third comment, Mr. Lummis has been an excellent, has been excellent in all aspects of professional culture. That is evident by his constant attention to the school staff and students, as well as the school committee. And finally, your leadership sets a high standard and encourages staff to continuously strive for growth and collaboration. You lead by example and inspire the district to do their best every day, regardless of the challenges. I appreciate your efforts, both cultural awareness and inclusivity. And your, your work, and you work hard to make sure everyone feels respected and included.
That's the end document, if anybody feels that. You can capture, or you have anything you want to add, but. Overall, very, very positive. And well-earned evaluation. Thank you for. All your very hard work.
Thank you.
You want me to say something?
No. I have a couple things to say.
I'll defer to you.
I mean, I appreciate the committees. Being open and honest and direct, supportive of the work that I do, as soon as evaluation. And in terms of mine, is, is an odd thing, I think it's not the, in the way that, it's like, I don't do much by myself. I do very little by myself. I mean, I work with a small group of people, usually babies in the room, which, you know, for the work that we're talking about is. Or, or often the work of many, many people. So, so it's. So it's, it's, it's fair to assess me, obviously, and, and of course you should, but I just want to acknowledge that. I have an important role, obviously, but I really don't do much on my own. You know, it's by working with others, by collaborating with others, it's by, you know. Perhaps maybe inspiring some people, you know, on my best days, but it's, you know, about. You know. Keep on working at it on the areas we have to improve, and as I said, my reflection, which, you know. I just always see, I try to see the real strengths and then empower what we're doing. But I'm also very, very deeply conscious and about what we have to do. Then challenge, and I know, I don't, I know folks don't always, you know, see, believe that I know those things, but I, I. I worry more about. The positive, what you said here, and I worry more about the fact that, yeah, we have to keep on. Working and figuring out ways, and by saying me, I mean, like, like, like my approach is staff. Engaging students and engaging our leaders, you know, understand the challenge and face, how do we get better at, you know, because it takes, I literally. I'm never going to have the best side of the room, you know, and I know that. It takes the, all, it takes the voices of any, any room to do that. Who's a classroom officer, so I think I deeply appreciate. The positive feedback. And I know that I have, I, I need to keep doing better, you know? And we all have work to do to repair from the strike. In a very difficult, this, actually, the word is. Disruption isn't quite, isn't quite the right word, you know, that comes through difficult negotiation, you know, and we've got the most difficult negotiation process, you know? We need to continue to build bit by bit. I obviously have a big role in that, you know, and. But that's a, a real challenge that. It's going to take some time, you know, and I think, you know, moments every single day, work on, so it's something that. A lot of folks care about, think about, and have work to do, or to get to a place where. There is. Trust on intention, I would say. I really believe that folks' intentions are really good, and I hope people believe that me, but we don't necessarily have the trust across the board about those intentions. We'll do more on that. We can do more on that. Certainly, I'll just, the last thing I think I'll say is, is just that. I think ultimately, part of that is we need to all become clear on where we're going and what we're trying to do, and what we're, what we're committed to. That can happen at any school, that can, these also happen at Boston District. As we build some clarity on, you know. Where we're going, what we're trying to do, and what we're committed to. I think that will help, that clarity will help us continue to move in the direction that, you know, is right for this community. But that'll take work. And working together in small, larger groups, you know, with staff. And working together in small, larger groups, you know, with staff and peer members to figure out. I don't think we are really know together of our. The single mind of what we want for our kids. I think we are, we want the good things for our kids, the best things for our kids, make sure they're ready for. Their lives beyond foster high, but I think we can get more focused and sort of, in a real committed way of what that specifically means. That can help drive us to better things. I, I, I just, sorry, I'm kind of rambling here, but last thing I'll say is. The great things going on at school every day. And it's very challenging as well. Both those things exist, and I will keep on talking about both those things. If we focus on one or the other, we're missing a whole picture and we are. And, and if you, and if you don't say both those things. And, and keep on harping on both those things, then um. We can't move forward. It's not a full picture of who we are. Our, our staff and our leaders and our students create fantastic things every day. It's hard, but we should exist and we've got to acknowledge and say, be as vocal about both of them. Or we can't move on together. Stop there. But it's, it's just, it's just, it's just.
I just want to make a comment before we go on, it's something about you and your evaluation of the whole night. So two very genuine conversations happened tonight, and one was from Dan when he got up and spoke. Your new speech now. And I can only hope that when this meeting is over and tomorrow when the school bell rings. That there's the beginning of a bridge or some sort of path to besides coming together and healing from the strike. And all that has happened because of the disagreements that have happened in the past. Because hearing from Dan tonight, that was a huge like, okay, there's, there's a sign of hope here. And hearing you respond in the way that I know you, which is very genuine, and I believe you care about our staff. So much more than they know it, and I'm trying to figure out how do we, how do we get that portrayed? Because the, the statements that were said in your evaluation, your honesty and your appreciation and how good we think you are in communication. And you hear from teachers complaining about the opposite. I know I sit here like, how can this be? Where, where is the distance at? But today, tonight, I'm hoping there's a connection there between those two conversations and that we move forward somehow. And get better at what we're all doing. That's my only ask of everything that's been said tonight about your evaluation, because it can be done.
If I may, a couple of things, one is I too appreciated Dan's comments, and I think Eric also mentioned. Working together, you know, a bunch of people did, and I think that's really important. I also want to tell you a little story that I was. You know, I took my wife to lunch on Sunday. We went to Panera, so that tells you something about me as a husband. And taking her to Panera, eating for a salad. But also, but while I was there, while we were there having lunch, there was a teacher there. And she was doing her lesson plans for the week, and all her lessons planned spread out on a table. And I told my wife, why don't you go sit down for a few minutes and I'm going to see if I can talk to this person over here. She was gracious enough to let me sit down and chat with her for a few minutes and. It was a very enlightening conversation for me and. I've had a couple of those with teachers since the end of the strike and I'm looking for people as a school committee member. People that want to see the train leave the station, so to speak, and really drive change in the Gloucester Public Schools. I'm not used to losing, I'm not used to things not working out the way I think they should. And I'm certainly committed and I probably can speak for the rest of my co, my. Co-members that, hey, we're all committed to them and I don't want anyone to leave this room thinking tonight, oh, the school committee's just. Gutted in for, you know, we're not, we've got no chance yet. It's going to happen through small conversations, it's going to happen when me taking a chance and sitting down with a teacher and saying, hey, can I talk to you for a few minutes? And hearing some things that I might feel uncomfortable and being able to relay some things that may be uncomfortable for that teacher as well. And the challenges are enormous and anybody that doesn't think that they are is kidding themselves. And but it's not going to happen unless it's a collaborative effort. It's not going to happen unless these teams that we kind of have begun to form coming out of the strike. Work collaboratively to try and, try and come up with some solutions. That doesn't mean that everybody gets what they want at the end of the day, but it at least allows a forum to be heard and to be, you know. Valued at a, at a place that might be different than what you, what you're thinking right now, so. Know that, again, I still think I can speak with the rest of the council, that school committee members that, hey, that's the goal. And two years from now, you know, I want to be able to sit here and, or be able to look on the school committee and say, wow, there's been some effective change there. You know, and I, I, I personally am looking forward to it and I'm personally looking forward to meeting and talking to more teachers and. Listening to them and really kind of seeing what we can do about it, so. I appreciate the comments tonight, like Melissa said, and I think, I think there's watershed moments. I actually think during the strike, there was a couple of watershed moments that really kind of flipped the switch and allowed us to get to a finish line. And I think the same thing might have happened tonight, we'll see, so I appreciate, appreciate you being here. And I think I went over my three minutes.
Yeah, I'd just like to say a few things. Well, the first thing I want to say is, I, you know, the perspective that was required to fill out this, this evaluation. Was difficult to get in that headspace because so much has happened and this was so delayed, I had to reach back. And, and put away written events, I had to reach back like over a half a year ago to keep that in perspective. And not let it compadre this evaluation, so. I don't know how successful I was with that, honestly. It wasn't a difficult, it was a difficult situation, but um. So, you know, there's a lot of things in, in each of our individual evaluations that we're not putting to the brink today that, that Ben himself has. That he'll reflect on himself, so, you know, some things that I'm, you know, I said, you know, and other people have said that, you know, you guys didn't get to hear, so. It's not just what you heard tonight, there's a lot of constructive criticism and, you know, we couldn't go over it at all tonight, of course. But, you know, I'm. Just want to say, I, I grew up in Magnolia and I, I went through the whole twelve years in our public school systems. And then I went away for twenty years and I had a couple of young kids and. And when, when I was given an opportunity to make a change in my life, I, I brought them back here. And, you know, brought my, my kids back to the school that I used to go to in West Parish and was brand new. And, you know, got to tell my girl, you know, this school is just as old as you are, and that was kind of something, so. So much has changed since I was a student in the system. But there are a lot of things that I remember and appreciated and that's why I came back and. And it's, you know, it takes a lot to make change and that's why I joined. The school committee, why I put my hat in the ring, because I, I want the school system to be the best school system that it can be. And, and, and I know there's value, I, I saw it when I was a kid, I got a lot out of it and it took a lot of personal initiative. And that's the other thing that we need to do is to make kids understand that they have the power to, to empower themselves. To, to take initiative and, you know, they take a little, they just need to take a little inspiration. It could be peer inspiration, it could be from their teachers, it could be from their parents. But we, we can do this together and I just, I'm not the type to hold grudges. You know, I put my trust in, in all the teachers and in the administrators with my children and. I just, I, I just want to move on and, and make it the best for, for the kids and the next generation.
Okay, great. The, the, first of all, Ben, this was stated, probably the only job that has a public evaluation, you know, so at least we only have to get elected. Which is so easy, but I think that, to Melissa's point too about building a bridge, I think we certainly started to lay the foundation. All sides of the bridge, and one thing I'll remind everybody of, my cousin Rich, the history teacher. Two of our closest allies in the world right now are Japan and Germany. And remember what it was like in, you know, nineteen forty-one to nineteen forty-six. So if we could do it, the three countries, I think that the educators, school committee and school administration can make it work. And I think we had a lot of really good steps, so I think this is the acceptable thing.
Okay.
Laura.
Laura has her hand up.
Hold on, I'm not in the room, so it's hard to get a sense of exactly what's happening. But although I can hear everyone, but Ben, I want to say thank you for your leadership and your. Desire and the importance you're placing on building these bridges and hearing so many voices and taking in all of this information. And criticism and with, with such respect for everyone who brings it and. I, it's been a difficult few months and I think if, if tonight is a bridge towards healing. That is the best possible thing we could do to all, for all of Gloucester Public Schools, for staff, for students, for families. And I would love to believe that tonight is the night it begins, that would be a beautiful thing, but thank you, Ben, for all that you have done.
So I just, I just wanted to say to the committee for your review, you know, I, I am, I, I'm honored to be here. It's a privilege to work for in Gloucester, to live in Gloucester, it's a privilege to serve this community and work with our, you know, our tremendous staff, leaders. And, and on, in terms of just healing, everything I can do, I'm open to doing. And I'm not the one who comes up with a lot of really good ideas, so I need other people's ideas. On, on how we work together to go forward. And I'm open to those from anybody and everybody, but I at least have the good sense of knowing that. I'm not the one that comes up with all the good ideas and we have a lot of powerful, a lot of intelligent, a lot of really great people that hugely dedicated in so many ways. This community and our students and we need everybody to throw out ideas and work together on, on, on healing. And that's happening in lots of, in, in small ways, a lot of small ways now and some, it's almost more obvious ways, I mean. You know, folks are ruining every head on that, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to really acknowledge that. And we need to keep on coming up with more ways, more and more ways to bridge the gaps and listen closely and work. Really, you know, at this point, we have worked together. So lay down some of the rhetoric, lay down some of the, just the. Walls and really work together. Our students are much too important. For, and, and these aren't challenges that like one group or one person or one team or one grade or one school solve them, way more complex. Not every single person, you know, really working together on, 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 on these pieces. Won't get the best idea to, and I'm committed to obviously get the best ideas that.
Um next item of business is subcommittee reports. And the first item, the first subcommittee is program subcommittee meeting of February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-five. And chairperson releasing, you know, give the report.
Yes, so we met last night to go over changes to three policies. I'll, I'll go through them and I believe the last one Amy's going to give a little presentation. So the first is policy J F related to intra-district school choice, so school choice within Gloucester. And it's in section five, three. The change that is being proposed is to, this is for kindergarten only. For moving the, the timing for making decisions on entrance into a different school, a school outside your catchment area. In a little bit later in August. So, so the understanding is that it's now, it's previously was earlier in August and we don't really have the information at this point. By that point of to know how many kids are actually coming into our kindergartens. So what was proposed was to move the decisions for entering kindergarten in intra-district school choice. From between August twentieth to the first day of school. We had a vibrant conversation about that and expressed concern about families learning too late. About whether their child could get into the, the different school. But also, you know, Ben and Amy explained to us that, you know, because we don't know how many kids are coming into kindergarten especially. We run the risk of over, over promising and having bigger class sizes, which has happened in Plum, which happened at Plum Cove. So they are taking that one back and they're going to come back with another proposal, but, but we are, we are working on that later timeframe. For announcements of intra-district for kindergarten. Any questions on that one? Nope, okay. The next policy we discussed was J F B B, which is inter-district school choice, so school choice from outside of Gloucester. This has been going on, we've been working on this for more than a year. Desi had reviewed our school choice policy and we were not in alignment with Desi requirements, so that was the beginning of going through this. So we're looking at, we looked at a number of different issues in this, in this policy, both the timing of. When we identify our openings and then when we give, there has to be a lottery if there's more, if there's more applications and spaces. Jesse wants that lottery to happen before July first, we're just looking at when we decide the timing is, so that's one piece of this. Another issue is sibling language, which is an interesting piece of who is, who is legally a sibling. To get preferential admission into Gloucester Public Schools for inter-district school choice. So Desi has given a definition and we had a, a discussion about how we can adjust the language. To include foster and stepchildren in, in the same family. And then we also discussed sort of a, it's not exactly school choice, but it's sort of in the ballpark. The issue of if a student leaves, if a student's, a family is moving out of the district. At some point during the school year. What our policy is going to be on allowing students who want to stay in the district through the end of the year to stay. So it's not school choice and it cannot be in the, in school choice and that's a confusion we've had before. But what do we want to make our policy for students who are asking to stay when their family has left to finish the school year? So Ben and Amy are going to come back to us with proposals on that. Because we did want to come up with a way to have that in policy, so we aren't making individual decisions on that. You guys, any questions? Yeah, Bill? Oh, you're, yeah.
Sorry, did you say, did you say that? Are, are, are we looking to allow students to finish out, if they move out of district, to finish out the year in Gloucester, is that what you're saying?
If they want to, if, firstly, if they want to, and secondly, we're looking at if, you know, probably, again, this hasn't been decided, but we're looking at probably. After January first, you know, it depends on when they leave the district, right? If they move in September, that's one thing, if they move in March, that's another. So sort of putting some parameters on that in whatever ultimate policy we have, what were you going to say, Ben?
Yes, sorry, just, just to add to that, we, and first of all, this all has to go back to the, you know.
Right.
I haven't had full committee yet, yeah, she's just giving updates, so, because we have work to do, so I'm saying, but just, just to answer your, to answer your question, you know. The difficulty is, the thing's very clear that you can't accept anyone into the school choice program, you know, other than the regular process. And if you're allowing folks in the school choice program midway through the year, okay, without the lottery process, which will get into more, then, then you're circumventing that. Okay, and that's where we got into, that's why Desi reviewed us before. We made, we made a decision that actually was against their regulations for, for our families. And put them into school choice when they shouldn't have been, basically, okay, so that's what, I mean, there's, there's real value for the let. So that's what, I mean, there's there's real value for the let, like seniors, for example, that's the most obvious example, letting students finish the year out if it's closer to the end of the year. So, but we don't know yet what mechanism we can use for that. Because if it's in school choice, it's perhaps something different, we just have to look into that.
Yeah. And both of these have gone back to, you know, these just need more work. We're not, you know, we didn't recommend. The third policy, which I'll just give a frame to, and Amy, are you planning to do the little slideshow or, okay? So the third policy is policy A C, which is Title IX policy. So just a little bit of a frame, this is coming from the federal government. And and basically, and Amy will explain, we had changed our policy A C in twenty twenty when that administration came in. Then we changed it again last year to be in, be in compliance with the last administration. And now we're being asked to put it back. So we're not going to vote on it tonight. We have recommended this to the full committee and we'll vote on it in our next meeting. But Amy's gonna give a presentation to explain sort of what's happening.
So I handed out to you our two versions of the policy. The top one should say twenty twenty version at the top. And the next one should say current file. I'm just gonna talk about some of those changes for a little bit. So it, we need to kind of take a little history lesson of the last five years. Back in twenty twenty, there was amendments from the former, from former and now current administration. And that new Title IX sexual harassment regulations went into effect on August fourteenth of twenty twenty. The regulations imposed a prescriptive grievance process and created much more detail and resource intensive investigative process. It took what used to be a single investigator model and created a multiple person or team Title IX model where there would be an investigator, a decision maker and an appeals officer, three separate people. There was a higher standard for what constituted sexual harassment. And districts were required to adopt a Title IX grievance procedures to meet public rights. Then in twenty twenty four, new Title IX regulations came out in April of twenty four. And districts were asked to implement the new regulations. We did that last fall, in this, in September, feels like a long time ago, lots happened. On September eleventh, we we voted that in. We were a district that was on top of it and we made the changes in appropriate manner. Those districts that did not make changes don't have to do anything now because they're still with the old regulations, so shame on us for being on top of it. But now in twenty twenty five, the end of January, we have been told to go back to the twenty twenty regulations. So that's why that's on top. It's not our current, it's our old and used to be our new. And I'm just going to point out some of the changes, the differences and what it means. So overview of the changes, the Title IX grievance process is narrowed back down to just sexual harassment. In twenty twenty four, it was a more broad, it include included things like for gender and pregnancy related conditions, it made, it was a bigger definition. It also included sexual discrimination based on all of this. Also, in Title IX now, sexual based harassment no longer includes, and this is what would, it went broader in twenty twenty four. It included sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy related, pregnancy or related conditions, sexual orientation and gender identity. And the definition of hostile environment for sexual harassment was also more narrow. It's more narrow now, so they broadened it in twenty twenty four. In twenty twenty four, we went from the, what the right, went from the team model back to a one person investigator model that the Title IX coordinator would do the investigation and could make the decision and appeals, it will be in one person. You're now going back to the team model where there will be an investigator, a separate person that is the decision maker, and then a separate person that's the appeals officer. This twenty twenty version now, twenty twenty five version narrows the investigations back down to local authority where in twenty twenty four, if things happened outside of school, outside of our state, outside of our country, as long as it impacted our school day, we were in, we were required to do a title estimation. So this brings that more narrow focus back. The other key change is the definition of a hostile work environment. So in twenty twenty, it was an unwelcome conduct determined by a reasonable person to be so severe and pervasive and objectively offensive that it effectively denies a person equal access to the recipient's education employment program or activity. In twenty twenty five, it's the exact same definition. The one in the middle, twenty twenty four, is unwelcome sexual based contact that based on the totality of the circumstances is subjectively and objectively offensive and is so severe and pervasive that it limits or denies a person's ability to participate in or benefit from a recipient's education program or activity. So it's going back to the the more narrow definition, it takes subjective divinely out of it. And what does that mean for our district? Well, we need to redo our policy, that's why we're here tonight to introduce that. Our procedures will go back to the procedures of the twenty twenty regulations. Our notices and handbooks will be updated, the website will be updated and training will occur. So this past August at our leadership retreat, we had training on the new twenty twenty four regulations. We'll have probably do that again this summer and just to make sure we're clear because it has been a moving target and make sure everybody's on the right same page. And why can't we get this right?
You could, I think you could.
It is a change in policies, not a new policy, does that mean it can?
You know, you know, you could.
And that will accommodate, nothing other than that.
Only one reading because it, because it is.
It's going back to the policy of twenty twenty that we had until
Every year.
The beginning of September this year, this year. That's my vote.
Yeah, so we could, we don't have to, right, right.
We already vetted it four years ago. Unless there's concerns from the administration, other than what you can have a concern about. They take subjective out, but they also put three different people involved, so one washes the other.
There are regulations that are in the choice.
Right, that's that's ultimately what, you know, is obviously in many ways, political football, realistic reasons that I don't need to comment on, but nor should I. But it is also federal law, regulation, you know, we need to abide by it. So.
Just do it.
Well, the other thing is, you know, we're not limited, I mean, we have to conclude this, but we could add our own take, like additional things, not not remove things, but add if there's more consideration of that, then maybe we should continue to discuss it. But if if this is how it's gonna be, we don't need to add anything, say like, you know, additional, is there any thoughts on like something that might be missing from this that we would want to add?
I think we vetted it so good in the past.
Yeah, I, I, we don't have anything to add or recommend on that, and if we did, we'd have to review it. Very seriously.
Yeah. That's, that's why I'm like, we're gonna vote on it today, this is how it's gonna be. If not, then we should discuss further or make any additional.
I think it's pretty clear because it stripped back a lot of this.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't fit the narrative in the new administration. This was kosher according to the old and now new administration, twenty twenty version. I don't, we can't, we can't start, if we plug anything else into this, it's going to direct legal counsel.
Yeah, no, no, we're not.
Well, it's our, it's our school policy that that is adhering to federal policy. But it doesn't mean that our school couldn't add additional policies.
Well, it's gonna fall under Title IX, but I don't.
Well, it's very under
Title IX a lot.
It's under non-discrimination and harassment, not Title IX, this not our policy. Our policy includes Title IX, is what I said. Yeah.
Do we want to vote tonight?
You vetted this in twenty twenty, but they did.
Laura, Laura wants to say something too, that's okay.
So I, I think, I'm, I'm, again, I'm not in the room, but I feel like we should just decide if we're gonna vote on this tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I make a motion. Can I make a motion from here?
Yes, you can, Laura.
I make a motion that we accept the amendments to policy A C Title IX as previously discussed.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Chair Clancy.
Yes.
Ms. Wees.
Yes.
There you go.
Boom.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Laura.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay, next subcommittee report is building and finance meeting before this meeting, okay? By Air Prince. Thank you. So usually we don't give reports right after meetings, but we're doing it tonight because we have some timely action to take the motion that was brought up regarding preschool. So I'm gonna be a little bit more detailed than in preschool. So Andrea Perella, a wonderful advocate and anchor at the preschool, came for us tonight to discuss enrollment in the fees of preschool. So currently at preschool, we have a hundred sixteen children. Fifty two of them are a special education enrollment, fifty four of them are peer enrollment. Out of those fifty four, students receiving pre tuition is thirteen, students receiving reduced tuition is three. And we have seven students of staff members that receive a reduced tuition because they're the children of our staff. Currently, the prices are two hundred forty dollars per month for a half day. You go Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M to eleven, or a half day, second Monday through Thursday, twelve P M to two thirty. The fuller day is meaning a more fuller day, not for us in school, four hundred eighty dollars per month. That is a Monday through Friday program, eight thirty to twelve, eight thirty A M to twelve thirty P M. Then there's a fuller day hybrid, which is three hundred, currently three hundred eighty six dollars per month, which is integrated Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M to twelve thirty P M. And then on Friday, there's a special education portion only. And then there's a pilot program, which is six hundred eighty dollars per month, which meets Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M to two thirty P M. And on Friday, eight thirty to twelve thirty. When we talked about the budget and it's approximately a two million dollar budget between salaries and ordinary expenses and contracted services, but not enough to meet the demands of the program. So we talked about the increasing costs of an incoming population that is more intensive and requires additional supports, a lot of challenges coming in over the next year. There's a greater demand for special education related services due to those children coming in. And there is an expected increase in expenses of approximately four point seven percent the increased salaries that we recently negotiated. We talked about being more staff to speech pathologists so that they can meet the needs of three sessions of thirty minutes per day with lots of non verbal children that will be attending the program next year. So with all that being said, it seems like a lot, but the proposed changes are twenty dollars more per month than what we currently charge with no change to the the version of pilot program, which was that six hundred eighty dollars per month means the number of people on Friday. So with that being said, it was a motion by Kathy Clancy and seconded by Bill to recommend to the full committee to increase the charges per month to add an additional twenty dollars for the first programs that I gave you. And then a ten percent discount for siblings. And I will note that we have full sets of plans coming to the program so that we benefit to those programs right away. But the motion is to increase by twenty dollars per month for these programs and the ten percent discount for kids at once. And I saw most.
So.
Okay, and to clarify, this is effective for next year.
Next. Then I just put on the screen here from the presentation, you see what the new question will be per month, also per year. As I just said, this is an increase of twenty dollars per month, so it was two forty per month for the half day, four eighty per month for the, for the four day, really six, we at the end session. But but you can see that the lowest one here, the one that has the most but most time, double dip, you know, you can pilot for two years, you'll know how much.
Laura, question?
Yeah, I just, just a question about tuition. Do, are there people who can apply for assistance with tuition or is this the tuition people pay?
What you have, what you see now is, yeah, is, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so so this wouldn't exclude people for whom this would be prohibitive.
Right, and then there's, you can reduce tuition or free tuition, but they're different depending on the family's needs.
Okay, great. That, that answered my question. Thank you.
I think we were really competitive against other programs.
Yeah, I can, yeah, that's true.
You know, we're kind of in the middle, if not less than some other surrounding districts.
I'm just showing you quickly, I mean, this is, this is a sort of comparable public school districts. This is, this is just comparing the half day, which is the easiest one to compare because they're most consistent in terms of time, you know, per day. And you see that, and these are, you know, ones we are able to find, which are either dark or local districts, these are, these are district rather. And so you can see just where we stand with them and it's sort of a little, little, little lower, lower end of it. So, and that's, and that's, that's the new cost, the increased cost, increased tuition. And then another one, this is just in terms of locally, these are private preschools, a little harder to make the comparisons here because just their different lengths of time, different, you know, lengths that cross them. These are typically on the right hand side, you know, full year, all year round programs. But so we just tried to do it per month. And you see that then we're also very, very competitive on this as well, what we're looking at, I mean, one example here, this is for our half day for the whole year, ten months is what one place would have done for one month. They, for half day, so private preschool, preschool, but a much wider variety of offerings that we do in terms of fine flexibility, but also typically more expensive. Oh, yes, I mean, yeah, Williams per month, it's same, same rate, we had like a year. That's interesting.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none.
Ms. Berga.
Yes.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Chair Clancy.
Yes.
Yes.
Then we went on to talk, a regular conversation about other districts transportation and tuition. As a reminder, we have a seven million dollar budget. We talked about transportation costs and we still have two students waiting to be placed services. With that being said, knowing that our budget was five hundred and five hundred. We are at a point where we improved our budget at six million for tuition. We are in the budget right now by three hundred and thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Have some anticipated growth with two students waiting to be placed. We do still have our special education contingency in the amount of four hundred thousand. And as it appears today, if this was the end of the year, we would have three hundred eighty eight thousand three hundred sixteen dollars left in the budget after use of that. um left in the budget after use of that contingency that we have on our talking about other district transportation, um, which I believe is looking better in that area. Again, just wanna um remind you that we do have two students that need to be placed and those costs were not projected in the transportation. Um, but looking at the overall budget with transportation costs, um, we are at the top, we need nine hundred thousand at the end of the year. Um, but just to remind you, it is February. Um, I asked, we asked questions about where we were last year and we had many surprises after February of last year. So, well, it looks good right now, fingers crossed that um it looks actually in June. But we anticipate that to change. Um, so we talked a lot about sucker break of money and how we usually have um more money than what we have to carry over. That's always gonna be a concern of ours. We're trying to build that back up. Um, and that's a conversation we'll have when we develop the budget for one floorway. We talked about chapter seventy state aid. Um, looking at next year, um, the state set a seventy-five dollar per student increase of approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, Gloucester received approximately twelve million dollars. Will we see twelve million dollars approximately? Um, we did have a decrease of fifty-five students. Um, that is about a two percent change in state aid over what we received. Um, the average for districts is to receive approximately six percent increase, but Gloucester, because of our um, the diversity that we have in Gloucester, it's only two percent um increase for us next year. Um, we talked about capital planning. We have a lot of projects. There is a list that I really like to see it. And a lot of important projects that need to be completed, some are in process, some work forward to two thousand and twenty-six um and even twenty-seven, um, but it's good to see that um this was an active conversation about even some work done around us for this, that is actually the work. We had budget transfers that I believe we approved in the um incentive agenda coming forward. There was three or four of them. And that is, that's the end of the night for today.
As a reminder, we were still committed to creating the stabilization count in the number of seven hundred million.
We have, we talked about that. And how we
Uh, based on free cash, I can tell you free cash is gonna be significantly committed to it. Soon as it's in, and certified, uh, we'll go to counsel. I don't remember if we got folks creating, we have, we can both create the count, the company.
Because we'll be asking for it. Thank you. Okay, um, move on to other action. Um, we have some grants to accept. There's a lot of letters. Um, I move that we accept the fiscal year twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five F C seven-four I D E A I U P grant in the amount of twenty-two dollars. Second. Okay, so this is a grant that's going to use for um professional development to um particularly help our teachers that are target for needs of our students. Um, moved in second, um, roll call vote.
Could I, could I make a request that we get the explanations for follow them, then just do one vote?
Right. Okay, um. So you want
So if, if
I'll read them all.
Yeah.
Some Okay, you brought the
No, if needed.
If needed, okay. Um, I move that we accept the Massachusetts Cultural Council Gloucester High School Theater creative projects for schools grant in the amount of five thousand dollars.
I think you need to do them.
So do them all.
Yeah, I think you need to
One, one, one motion. Okay.
Okay, following grids.
Moving all of them, but just We accept the following grids. Um. Uh, Gloucester Education Foundation, Flonco play grant in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Gloucester Education Foundation, Spederitz Elementary play grant in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Gloucester Education Foundation, O'Nellie Printmaking with Mary Ryan Landor grant in the amount of one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. The Gloucester Education Foundation, O'Nellie Academy grant in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Gloucester Education Foundation, Elementary and Middle School Bands Grant in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five um, Massachusetts C E C Climate Critical Workforce Training Strand A Grant in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars.
You made information on that one?
I said, I have a little Okay. So it's been moved and seconded, and now the last question.
Alright, so the last time I was here, that was on there and I was a little um hesitant to explain why because it was on the one prior. Um, and so we did a little research and so when you voted on it two meetings ago, it was for the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. So it was off by thirty dollars. And that was because when all of the, the grant finally came through, it ended up with thirty-dollar higher amount. That's why it was on the um vote last time. This time, it is on the vote because the money is coming in to two strands. Gary, you're gonna bail me out if I get this wrong, but there's two, there's a strand A and then there's um a second strand and the month, oh, and an ARPA, ARPA, and so we didn't vote it into the right bucket for City Hall to have it in the right place. So this vote is for two hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. And it is to go into the ARPA, oh, you voted for it to go into the ARPA fund and it should go into which fund, Gary? The strand A?
Strand A.
Yeah, so it's where the money is landing.
Is that on our budget or the city's budget?
It is our budget, correct?
Our budget.
Yes, so it got put in the wrong bucket last time.
Sounds correct, but I can tell you, thank
It's, it's a complete accounting thing that happened twice.
Yeah, remind me, this is
No, I don't think
What was it for, I forget.
For the C V T.
It's uh, it's uh computers and simulators for the E V uh auto shop, uh, the freshman auto shop.
Okay, so
So it's, you voted the extra thirty dollars in last time and this is just putting it in the right place.
Okay.
Third chance charm.
So my, my question is, do we need to rescind those votes? Otherwise, we're accepting the sprint three times. So maybe I
Make a vote, accept, is modified?
So maybe you accept the first seven separately, this one on its own.
To say the correct
And say this is to correct the findings, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, seven, it sounds good, good approach.
Normally it would, it was already approved. So you're adding thirty dollars to it?
We did that last time.
Putting it in a different spot.
So you're taking it away.
We're just putting it in a different spot.
Putting it in a different
We're gonna, we can do a motion to say we're correcting the amount of the grant we're accepting.
Yeah, but I would do that separate than the others.
What you're saying.
Okay, alright, so let's talk about one through seven. Anybody have any questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayam verga.
Yes.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Mino.
Yes.
Chair Clancy.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Laura.
I couldn't hear you, sorry.
Um, okay, all those have been accepted. Um, I move that we um amend the, the acceptance of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five Mass C E C Climate Critical Workforce Training Grant reflecting going through A um with a correct amount of two hundred and seventy-five um nine hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So.
Yes.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Mino.
Yes.
Chair Clancy.
Yes.
Sweets and
Yes. Um, so uh, we, um, so we have another item of um action here, but we are going into executive session first. Um, and we will come out um to remember that, what is
This is because I have to recuse myself for that action that the nurses contract.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I can step off for a couple of minutes.
No, no, we have to do, we have
To discuss it, okay.
Yeah.
So you'll take it up at the end of executive session?
Yes.
So I won't be returning when we go to the session because
Because you will have left during
Because my wife's a member of the M N A and uh I have
Okay, so I move that we enter executive session. Um, we went to executive session purpose three of Master of Law Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, to discuss strategy. Like the bargaining with Washington Massachusetts Nurses Association. Gloucester Association of Education, Department of Health and Care.
Mayam verga.
Yes.
Mr. McKee.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mino.
Yes.
Chair Clancy.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, good night, everyone.